Good night.
Call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, February 12th, 2019 to order. They restand the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Amy, will you call the wall, please?
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Here. Okay. After this beautiful day that we've just -- everybody has power, I presume?
I do, I guess.
Everybody got to suffer a little bit. First item on the agenda is public discussion. Is there anybody in this vast audience that might want to come out? Okay. Next item on the agenda, we've lost our police chief, so he's not ready for it. Here he comes.
No, false alarm.
We're ready for the chief.
Oh!
Oh, my goodness!
I told you, he told me to move it.
He's looking at me like I was...
He told me to move it along. Governmental reports.
I can come up and tell you.
Hi. Kind of like that distance.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thanks for putting me on the spot.
Sure.
I wanted to turn the heat a little down.
Oh, thank you very much.
It is a little balmy.
It was cool in here earlier, that's why we turned it up, and now it's done its work.
It's lovely.
Not really a whole lot to report, thank God, everything's going well, knock on wood. We're quieter than most communities, as you know. The only thing that I may add would be that it is like snow season and ice, and we've noticed that people are pushing their snow from their driveway, or wherever their companies are, out into the street or across the street. And we don't encourage that or allow that here to, for snow to be pushed in the street, please push it off to the side. So, and not onto your neighbors' homes or windows or whatever to cause leaks or anything like that, if it's preventable. That's really all I have, unless you have questions.
No more accidents than usual, or anything like that?
No, although one officer just came in to tell me that the side streets are really icing up as we speak right now, it's gonna be a little treacherous tonight, so...
It's gonna snow, isn't it?
They're gonna go make a phone call.
And they're supposed to snow, aren't they?
It's supposed to. So, we were lucky today. Power went out for a lot of you on the east side. I hear it's back. We lost it here for a while this morning also.
Yep.
The generator worked properly.
Yay!
Good.
For the most part. And, um...
Big win.
We were fortunate with not a lot of, like, tree branches or anything down from, due to the ice, so really well today.
I like it.
So, good news only.
Excellent. Thanks what we like. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Moving right along. City Commission Liaison Report, starting with Commissioner Crzyjak, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. The regular Ferndale School Board meeting was held on January 15th last month at the Ferndale High School Media Center. The Superintendent's Excellence Award went to Dewan Pratt at University High School. The Eagle of the Month went to Cindy Burns. She's the data coordinator at Central Admissions. She was recognized for her work. And Building Pride last month was the UHS Teacher Leadership and Leadership for All Program. A couple highlights from the Spelling Bee. The Fuel Champion was Brooke Malone. And the Ferndale Middle School Champion, this will be a familiar name, was Peter Deegan Kraus.
Right.
He was the defending champion, and as an eighth grader, defended his middle school Spelling Bee championship. So, congratulations to Peter. Some more celebratory news. The Ferndale High School Wrestling Team won the district championship. This is the first time the Eagles Wrestling Team had won that title in about 20 years.
Wow.
So, yeah, they're very proud of that. And on Tuesday, February 5th, our own state rep, Robert Wittenberg, visited Fuel and met up with their student leadership team and talked about political involvement and, you know, goings-on in Lansing, how the state government works. So, Robert Wittenberg was very well received at Fuel on the 5th. Couple dates coming up. The planning meeting for the Ferndale Schools District Diversity Committee is actually tomorrow, Wednesday, February 13th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Tri-County Educational Center. That's located at 21131 Garden Lane in Ferndale. This is a committee that is looking to address diversity issues within the district, and anyone interested in helping with that mission is welcome to join. You can actually email for more information, ferndalschoolsdiversity@gmail.com, and they would love to incorporate you into that committee. Last date is the CASA Open House. This is the Center for Advanced Studies and the Arts. This is a really amazing opportunity. It's actually collaborative of many high schools in the area for advanced college-level classes and artistic advancement for students interested in those careers. I think it's really worthy of checking it out if you're, have a student in the district or even out of district who are looking to participate in CASA. The CASA is, CASA is located at 23561 Rosewood in Oak Park, and the open house is scheduled for Tuesday, March 19th at 6:30. And then the regular school board meeting is Monday, 20, Monday, February 25th at 7:00 p.m. at the Ferndale High School Media Center. And that's all I have this month, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Jason? Okay. Move on to Commissioner Perry, Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on January 28th. They selected the officers for this next year. Thomas Troyder remains the chair for both boards, and then Kevin McCutcheon continues as the vice chair. And Chrissy McAuliffe is the secretary for the DDA and Planning Commission for this next year. The group welcomed a new commissioner, Alex Belik. He brings some really good insights to the commission. He is in the Planning Department at the City of Troy, and he's also a adjunct professor down at Wayne State. The Planning Commission also reviewed and discussed the Traffic Calming Manual and unanimously approved moving it forward to the City Commission, which we'll talk about tonight. And then the DDA established their budget subcommittee to review and develop a recommended budget to present to the full board. And our next meeting will be April 22nd, 7:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Very good. Next is Commissioner Scott with the Historical Commission.
Yes, just a couple of quick things to mention. On this Saturday, the museum will be open for the public. We've added some things to each of the files based on information we found in the museum, so if you've not been to the museum in a while, you might actually see some information about your home that you weren't aware of before. It's just a matter of organizing some information. We put it into your folders. And if you've never been, it's a great opportunity to see how your house might have looked back in 1957, or to learn some details about the property going back to the time that the streets were created. And also to see a lot of good information about the city in general. So, that'll be this Saturday, the 16th, from 10 to noon.
Great.
And then the next meeting will be on Wednesday, March 6th at 7:00 over at the Rec Center.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next, Commissioner Wall with the Recreation.
Hi, thank you. We had our rec meeting January 30th, and we welcomed three new members, very exciting, good additions. Jay Sufi, Al Kazakowski, and Barb Stokes. So, they had their first meeting, it was good. Upcoming events, Wednesday, February 27th, 50-plus trip to Little Caesars Arena and lunch at Main Detroit. That sounds cool. Tuesday, March 5th, 58 in a Cyren Hotel Tour and Lunch at Candy Bar. And Candy Bar sounds, I'm dying to go there, it sounds so cool. It's all pink and it's really retro and cool. Cool. So, this, and the Cyren Hotel's supposed to be beautiful, too. Little plug. Thursday, March 7th, St. Patty's Day Bingo, please pre-register. Fun. I know, that sounds fun. Bring your, what is it, the rabbit, the rabbit's feet for bingo, for good luck. And then our next meeting is March 27th at 6:30. I have something else I want to tell you, very exciting. So, I think some of you know that we have an auction in the city. It happens to be May, May 18th on Saturday. And something very new and exciting's happening this year that we've never done. So, if you go to PleasantRidgeFoundation.org through the whole month of February, tickets are only $40, which is a total bargain, because they're, they're going to go, at the door they will be 60. So, this is a real value, $40 on the website, all through February.
All through February? Okay.
Yes. Very exciting. And it's 100-year celebration. We have our own flavor of ice cream, all kinds of interesting good things, shaking it up for the food situation.
Nice.
Italian.
Italian.
You heard it here first, it hasn't been announced anywhere. So, very exciting stuff. And it's a wrap, that's all I have.
It's not, is it? It's not coming from the chicken place, though, right?
That's what I was... Oh, you know what, I should say one more thing. I'm sorry. Can I reiterate for one second?
That's why I didn't start. I figured you probably had something. Go ahead.
He just followed it. So, the foundation is looking at sponsoring the lighting in Gainesboro Park, which is very exciting.
Wow.
So, that's gonna be really great, 'cause if you've been over there at night, it's a little dark. So, it's a safety issue, and it'll be great, making it, you know, a lot safer for our residents and nice.
Then definitely come out to this auction.
Yes, come and support the auction. This is what it's paying for. Every dime goes back into the city, but doesn't get spun on food.
Now, Commissioner Wall, the, like, our street, like, Devonshire has frequently, like, done, donated gifts and things like that.
Oh, yes, yes, such as baskets, to be fair. So, I would encourage all of you out there in the, in the audience and at home watching us, to dig deep and go to your blocks and put together a fantastic basket, if you will, that will be auctioned off in benefit of your city. Mr. Crzyjak, Commissioner Crzyjak, you've done that as well, haven't you?
We've done it the last few years. Somehow, we, we determined that whiskey sells in this...
Bourbon! It was good, soft.
Yeah. So, we put that together the last two years, and it seems like it's garnered some interest. I know Devonshire has also, you know, put together some fantastic prizes, so I think...
Beer wagons and Tonys.
Yeah.
Oh, the Tonys! The Tonys.
Seems to be a theme.
I can't tell what...
We know what brings in the money.
But I think you're right. I think if, if each block or each street gets together and can kind of contribute, not only does it help the city, help the foundation, it's a great point of pride and a little, you know, a little friend...
Family competition.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's fun. And if you've ever been to auction, you should come, 'cause it's a great time.
Yeah.
It is a great time.
Sylvan is going to have tomato juice, raw eggs...
I see someone approaching the badge.
Tomato juice, raw eggs, and...
That's right.
Ashroom.
If I can add to Commissioner Wall's idea, how about a, like a fantasy football league does a trophy that gets awarded to the best block, and it can be engraved, and every year it could go and place that ice.
Like the Stanley Cup!
To encourage participation.
Look at that!
I like it a lot.
I love that. Create some friendly competition.
I love it. That's great.
Yours to you. It's an awesome idea.
I'm impressed. You can just keep coming up with those ideas all night long.
Yeah, don't hold back.
Sure.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Now, it really is a wrap.
It is.
I just bought my ticket.
Yeah, oh!
Oh, wow.
This is action-oriented group.
Look at that.
PleasantRidgeFoundation.com.
Org.
Org.
Oh, still find it anyways.
It took my money out of my way.
Smart community. You've been fishing.
I just sent it home to China.
Somewhere that money is...
Being converted to bitcoin.
Mr. Scott, we don't have it, you know, your ticket here.
Well, yes, just in another, you know, just supporting that we need to see everybody coming out to the auction this year.
Yeah.
And if you can't come, just buy a ticket anyways.
It's a great donation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Next item is the Consent Agenda. We only have two items. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda be approved.
Please approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, can we have a go, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Yes. Motion is approved. Next item is the Traffic Calming Manual that was mentioned a little bit earlier.
Jim? Yes. So, we brought this and introduced it last month, and then we began sort of a road show during January to take it around and show it off. We had the town hall on the 22nd, which we had some real nice attendance at, there was a good discussion. We went through the manual itself and the process to implement traffic calming measures, and then we had the Woodward Heights specific portion of that event. And we had a really good discussion with a good group of Woodward Heights residents, and we went through the options for what we can test for traffic calming measures on that street, which we'll be doing this coming summer. But for now, the manual is before you for adoption at this point. As Ann mentioned, the Planning Commission recommended it for approval at their January meeting. We did make some changes to Section 6.2, which talks about the process for a resident-initiated traffic calming process. As we've discussed, there's four streets that stick out above the others in town. Ridge, Woodward Heights, Oakland Park, and Oxford. On the rest of the streets, they have very similar traffic profiles, what we call our local residential streets. The process to implement traffic calming is a little bit different. We're taking the approach of that street needs to ask us to do something. We're not gonna go change the status quo on those streets unless we're asked for it. So, Section 6.2 lays out that process. It's the same basic premise that was in the previous version, we just clarified that section a little bit more. So, the process is at least 50% of the households within a block of the street have to sign on to a petition to ask the city to start the process. The city, we will then say, okay, we'll convene a meeting and present some options for what we can do based on the manual and what makes sense, given the context of that street or block. We'll discuss that, just like we did with the Woodward Heights residents, and come up with a final plan that we'll test. All of that's done at the city's expense. It's not too expensive to do that. We have on-call consultants who, we basically have a retainer, yearly retainer, traffic improvement authority, they can help us. And then we've got a lot of the materials that we've used for other traffic calming tests around town. Then we'll decide, well, the residents will decide what they want to make permanent. And then what we have in the manual is that there will be a, an assessment to all the residents or all the households on that block. City can, could make a grant pool or matching fund pool available each year as budget funds come necessary to help offset some of those costs as the resources are available. But we don't have a dedicated funding source for this, and it would be competing with other funding and infrastructure interests that we, that we have, all the other infrastructure expenses that we have to maintain in the city. So, this would give us the flexibility year to year to say, okay, we have a little bit extra this year for traffic calming, we'll make it available. So, that would be the process. That's the only thing that's really changed in the manual since we looked at it last month. So, with that, I would hand it back to you for any questions or discussion you have on the manual.
Just a quick question in terms of discretionary funds. I mean, what do you have in mind, or what do you think that might do?
So, we have a couple pots. We have local and major streets. And then we have the infrastructure millage fund. So, you know, those are probably the three major funding sources that could provide some This year, this coming budget year and the next budget year, we finished reconstructing all of our streets. We sold bonds to do that. So, every year we have a little bit of extra money coming in in the infrastructure fund over and above what it takes to repay those bonds. Now, the next couple of years, we're doing sidewalk replacements to replace all the defective sidewalks in the city, so that's kind of consuming a lot of the infrastructure spending. Once that's done in a couple of years, we could have some, you know, could have some extra funding left over, but you never know what is, what issue is gonna crop up, what repairs need to be made, what maintenance needs to be done. So, that's why it's, you know, this is something that year over year we can see. You know, we may have 15,000 that we can make available for some improvement that a block could then organize themselves and apply for. So, I think those are the funding sources we'd use.
I was thinking in terms of dollar amounts that we're not, you know, gonna keep it fairly low, no matter what.
Right.
I think there's plenty of other uses for...
That's a yearly budget decision we'll have to make.
All right. You've got it in mind? Open that up for questions and discussion. You got it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to stick on the funding, some of the, and I love the way the manual lays out the options. Some of the, and we've talked about how some of the most effective, in fact, the most effective option is really a no-cost solution. I know we've mentioned this before, and it was brought up actually at the meeting about parking on both sides of the street, how that is a very sensible and proven way to draw down average speeds in a neighborhood. So, going from a price tag of zero up to, you know, some of the more expensive bump outs and chicanes, you're looking at, you know, upwards of, depending on the street and location, you know, 20, 15 to $20,000 for one of those projects. So, I appreciate the mayor's suggestion, or, you know, observation that, you know, this could be things, these could be projects, if initiated by the residents, that we could year to year find budget room for. Because, and I know we've talked about this, I personally am uncomfortable with the idea of the special assessment for a particular block. I, I think that a traffic calming method that is adopted and implemented on one street affects all of us, you know. We walk, you know, my, my kids play on many different streets, you know, my dogs walk on many different streets. My mayor walks on many different streets, so...
Not so much on a day like this, is it?
No, not so much on today. But, I mean, it is my belief that the improvements done, we've seen the improvements done to Ridge Road, we're anticipating improvements on Woodward Heights. You know, these collectively create, you know, a more safe environment citywide. So, that's why just 6.2 and the way it's laid out, I love, and I really appreciate staff, the thought that went into, how do we get residents involved? How do we kind of identify these streets? That there is a perceived problem, because I think what Jim and is laid out really clearly in this manual, you know, accumulating the data, and I know we've talked about what is the threshold, right? And we've identified above this threshold, the city will fund below this threshold, you know, that's something that neighbors are gonna have to look at on their own. I love that idea that, hey, if this is something that you really feel, you go around to your neighbors. Not only does that, you know, address the traffic calming, but it also creates some awareness amongst your neighbors, like, hey, this is a problem on our street, let's be serious about this. You know, a lot, a lot of it, as mentioned, is residents speeding on their own streets. So, maybe having those conversations with residents, hey, we can slow down ourselves and solve this problem, or there's a way the city will help us institutionalize a solution, you know, implement a solution there. So, I really appreciate the process that's laid out in 6.2. I continue to have objections with the special assessment, but I am, I would like it if a, if a street initiates this process, that before, somewhere in the steps between them actually being assessed, if they could approach the city, maybe if there's a window, say, before, when we're making our budget or when we're assembling our budget, where, hey, Jim, is there any outstanding, is there any streets who have approached us over the last six months who wanna, you know, look at street calming? Then we could look at the budget, and if there is, I know I would advocate for having those funds released for a project that are, some of the projects that are described in this manual. So...
How would you determine how, who gets the money, though? Like, if you, say that you have, I'm just curious, like, how would this work? Like, so you have, say that six streets, you know, wanna do a chicane, you know, wanna build a chicane, like an island or whatever, a couple of things, and then how would you determine? I mean, who did, who gets the funding?
Yeah, well, I think that's a great question. One of the ways we determined it on Ridge Road and on Woodward Heights...
Was data.
Was, right, with the data. We can also look at the data on these other streets. We have data on all these streets. But we could also look at how many residents on that street are interested in addressing the problem. If I, if I got a street and they came up with 90% of the people on that street who were interested or willing to come to the city to address an issue, I would look at that more, I would look at that with, more favorably than if maybe a group of like 20 residents on some street came, you know. So, I think, and that's why I love the process for citizen involvement, 'cause that kind of reveals how many residents are really concerned about this problem. So, that would be one of the considerations I know I would look at if we were formulating, okay, we only had, let's say we only have $15,000 this year, or $10,000.
That's what I'm picturing.
Yeah. What city, or what street, excuse me, could we help out with that $10,000? Not like, oh, six streets came to us, we have to fund six projects. I think that's a conversation, you know, this group...
Oh, but could certainly happen, I just think it's important to consider.
Yeah, for sure. And especially year to year, we could say, okay, if we have 10 grand this year, we're gonna fund this project. If we have 10 grand next year, we'll fund that project, you know. So, I think those are great budgetary discussions. So, my comfortable, my, my level of comfort with this document, which I think overall is a really fantastic document, and I would really encourage everyone to read, would just be that in the course of the process laid out in 6.2, that before we levy or before we assess any street, that we first look at, hey, is there, do we project money in our local street fund, in our, you know, surplus possibly, in one of the street funds where we, we could move in that direction. So, that's the only wish I would have in adopting this document tonight, is that we, you know, look at that.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I guess the way I look at it is, it's entirely possible that in the course of evaluating the things that the people want on the street, we find something other than speed or street volume that's generating their concern about their street. We've already measured the speed and the volume and determined them to be below a threshold. So, it almost in some ways falls outside of the scope of the, of the traffic calming approach. It could be something else. And there's nothing preventing us from setting aside money to fix those other problems beside a certain speed threshold or a certain volume of traffic. Maybe a chicane fixes another issue. Maybe it's noise, maybe it's a sidewalk crossing that feels inefficient in some way. But it isn't necessarily fitting the threshold of what we've defined as traffic calming. So, I don't know that the manual prevents us from spending money on those items, separate from Section 6.2. It's almost a 6.1 or not even a part of a traffic calming manual. We could spend money there if we think it's an issue that we uncover as a result of understanding the way the road works and put money towards it. And it doesn't violate anything that we've written in the manual.
Right.
And doesn't require us to change the manual. So, I'm actually okay with the way it's written, because I expect that we will find other things besides speed and road volume that we'll want to address over time, that we might want to put money toward.
I agree with that.
I also think that the whole evaluative process that we're gonna be going through, as far as sitting them down, going through the options, working through some options, is also gonna tell us the seriousness of that. It's also gonna work them through the process of whether they really want to go that far or what they really want to do, and as you said, may come up with other ideas. The one other comment I wanted to make was, you said that the mayor walks around, that's why I want to put my money on sidewalks first.
Right.
That's where, that's where my concerns are, the sidewalks need work. And I wanna make sure that the money goes to sidewalks as much as possible before. But I, but I like the idea of, you know, I think going into a budget year, budget discussions with some idea that there are people out there, there are streets out there that are.
Thinking about it.
Yeah. That we can think about it.
Well, realistically, the way the process works when you do the test projects, and then you evaluate the test projects, and then you meet with the residents to evaluate the, how the test projects work, and then to discuss what you wanna do for the final permanent installations, and then coming up with the cost estimates for those, and then go through the process to create a special assessment of this. There's going to be lag, there's going to be a budget year that turns over during this process. This is not something that a street's gonna come and then we're gonna have concrete trucks out there, you know, a week and a half later.
Let's build them.
There's going to be a budget year turnover in here, so there will, and, you know, it'll be a known thing, if a street comes and petitions to do traffic calming, we will all certainly know about it and probably have participated in that process. So there'll be an opportunity to work, you know, see how we can work that specific project in a budget, yes, certainly. And I think that's a great point, too, of, you know, when, when your parents are buying you something, I want, you know, the best, 'cause who cares? But, you know, and you have to save up your allowance for it, there might be some.
You may have some.
There might be some other things that are effective that cause a little bit less that people be willing to accept them.
Or try first, at least.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? So I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the Pleasant Ridge Traffic Calming Manual.
Your honor, I move that the city of Pleasant Ridge Traffic Calming Manual.
Is there support? A second. Any further discussion? All right, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Perry's. Next item, discussion regarding limits on fireworks ordinance. Yes, I thought that would've brought people into the room.
Well, when they're, when it's June 29th.
There you go, that's right.
A storm.
Then we'll hear from them.
When your dog's flipping over in the living room, because the fireworks are going off for the ninth straight day, we'll probably hear about this issue a little bit more. In your packet is an overview prepared by City Attorney Need. The state made some changes and amendments to their laws regarding what local communities can do in terms of regulating fireworks. In the packet, in the cover memo, I put together a summary table that lists the changes between what are current ordinance, which was passed under the previous state law, what they would allow us to do, how that would compare to what the limits under the new state law, and how those differences would be. And they're, you know, somewhat, somewhat different. I've actually, I threw the table on the PowerPoint, let me just get that.
Just amazed it, all those holidays are on there.
I know. The fines are steep, too.
I've not changed my fireworks.
So you see all those holidays under current state law. I mean, really, I don't know how many people were out blowing fireworks off for Washington Birthday, Columbus Day, but.
I knew they could, they would.
Not allowed.
But under the, under the new state law, it limits it to New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day. You know, the grilling and barbecue holidays, I guess.
New Year's Day.
The time limits change from eight AM to midnight to eleven AM to eleven forty-five, except you are allowed to go to one AM on New Year's morning. So, that's, that's the baseline summary. Greg has more detail on some of the other elements of this, if you're interested. The question we have before you is, are these changes to our local ordinance something that you are interested in pursuing?
Yes.
Mayor? Just a quick question, I may have misinterpreted the law. These are actually the minimum number of days, not the maximum number of days, correct?
This is the minimum we can limit it to.
The minimum that we can limit it to, so we could have sixty-five days if we wanted.
Right.
Yes.
I guess, maybe this is the maximum we can limit it to.
Okay.
But yeah, the minimum, the minimum we can limit it to would be.
Yes, yeah, got it.
Have at it.
Okay. Yeah. Where's that?
The cover memo pointed out there are a few other areas that are currently in state law, but not our local ordinance. They can be enforced under state law, like any other state regulation, we can also adopt it as a local ordinance if you wanna have local enforcement, as well as the statute, the new statute allows you to regulate some of the temporary fireworks displays, the guys in the tent that, you know, sell them a few days before the Fourth of July. I'm not sure if that's a problem here, although their parking lot's big enough, but, I mean, that's something else that was added in this legislation at the end of 2018. And the fine is steep, but, you know, when your ninety-pound dog gets in the shower upstairs because of the fireworks, it's a cheap race, a cheap fine that personally.
So it's talking about a thousand dollars, and five hundred goes to the local, and then the other five hundred goes, where is the other five hundred?
It's, yeah, well, it's any other, as with any other misdemeanor or similar penalty fine. It's just that the statute requires that that much be set aside for the level one.
Did the fine change?
The fine went up from five hundred to a thousand, it was five hundred dollars under the old statute.
I missed that part. Okay, thank you.
And the fine is for shooting them off in other times outside of these, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, shall we go for a motion, please? Motion to prepare an ordinance?
Your honor, I move the city commission to direct the city administration to prepare an ordinance to amend chapter forty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, section forty-two dash ninety-seven fireworks.
A second. Okay. Any further discussion? I think we're all in agreement.
Just a clarification, should the ordinance only update the days where hours that are allowed, or is the commission interested in seeing language on some of these other areas?
Preferably, I'd like to go with, I'm happy with the way it's presented.
Yeah, I was thinking about that and the fine, we have to also address the fine.
The fine would be, yeah.
Well, the fine, yeah, the statute does require you to have to increase the fine.
Right, exactly.
Says they will, shall impose that fine.
Got it.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm perfectly happy with the dates and times as, as listed there.
With the new state law, to match the new state law.
Yeah, yeah. Rather than being more onerous or anything like that, or seems, that seems enough time to shoot.
Midnight, yeah.
Feel some thinking.
Huh? How about you? Is it okay with you, you can, you can get your fireworks in and that's.
Yeah, so add to the motion as presented?
Do we need?
I, I don't think, I just wanted some clarification.
Okay.
So you're gonna repair, yeah, based on, right.
Based upon your comments, sure.
Okay.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Chrisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Perry's. Next item, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. I think we've been there before, okay?
Seems familiar.
Not directly related to the previous agenda item, I suppose, but this is another item that we do need to confront, that we do have a, a shot clock that's ticking. So we, we did present the overview of the new recreational marijuana ordinance and what that means for us and for local communities at last month's meeting. At this time, I think what staff would like is some direction from the city commission on how we should be proceeding from here, because with an ordinance that needs to be adopted sometime before November, we, you know, need some time to prepare that and, and to build into the process for this, to make sure that we hit that deadline, particularly with an issue such as this one. So we've laid out three options for direction you can provide to us in the agenda summary. The first would be to plan for a public input process, including a possible town hall and surveys to receive public input before, before deciding to opt in or out. I know that Berkeley and I think Royal Oak have had the MML come in and do some town halls, and do some survey work. The downside of this at this point is that one of the issues that, that we have is that there's so many gray areas in this ordinance, that even if we're having a town hall at this point, there's a lot of unknowns that are still going to exist. And there's a lot of questions that residents may have that we can't answer. So, you know, we could do that this year, we could do the town hall next year, after the state adopts some of their licensing regulations, and maybe some of these things, maybe, probably not, are clarified.
So would it be a hypothetical town hall, then? If we were to have a town hall now, it would be hypothetical, because we really have no answers to any of this.
It would be largely, I believe, hypothetical, especially based on some of the materials the MML's put out, and how, you know, they basically just raise a lot of questions without guidance. Yes. The second option would be for us to opt in, which means we would begin preparing an ordinance to allow for marijuana establishments to locate in the city, and we would just have to deal with those unknowns and gray areas the best way that we could, and hope for the best. And then the third option would be to opt out of the act and begin preparing an ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments in the city, fully understanding that this can be reconsidered at any time. Once we do have further information from the state in terms of their regulations or any kind of clarifications to the, to the law, or through litigation, we can come back and reconsider this decision, look at ways of allowing for marijuana establishments in the future, when some of the unknowns are eliminated, and we have more certainty on what we can and can't do, and what does and does not work. So those are the three options that we put before you. I think those are probably the three most likely options, but I'd be happy to discuss anything else you have on this topic.
Just a quick question, how, how long would it take to prepare an opt-out?
An opt-out would be simple, we could have that next month, for introductory.
So that we don't have, I mean, with the idea of opting out, we don't have to rush that?
We don't have to rush that, no.
Okay.
The other two options are the ones that will take some time.
Because I know Berkeley is having a meeting next week, correct?
On the nineteenth.
Jason, you said you were probably going to attend?
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna attend on the nineteenth.
Because that's one, that's more of a public, more of a town hall, kind of, I think, because Royal Oak's having a working session with a lot of people coming in to talk about for their commission, but also it's being simulcast in the library and other auditoriums and things, and then they're going to have an actual survey instrument created, which I'm interested in what kind of survey questions can be asked when nobody knows, no, again.
Right.
No, sorry.
It seems premature.
Right.
But it's understood why people are very interested.
Interesting.
Yes.
Does the state, state seem like they're on track with meeting the end of your, the December deadline?
They're, they're working on it, but there is no real benchmark or guidance as to what they've done, right?
State doesn't provide us with updates.
They don't?
Yeah, but there was a podcast that the Michigan Municipal League had, and they had some experts on this, Chris Johnson, who's the general counsel, Clyde Robinson, who's attorney, city of Kalamazoo, and they asked, you know, on this timeline, and they said that behind the scenes, this is nothing official, because obviously they didn't wanna pin anything down, but our newly elected governor, Governor Whitmer, is pushing for a June deadline for this. This is something that she does not want to incur a bunch of chaos in, and she believes it's on her plate to get done in a, in a timely way. And so I look at, you know, this isn't something that the state's gonna be just lollygagging around, and, you know, come November, they're gonna throw something out there. I really believe that Governor Whitmer has people on this right now, that Laura, the state agency is working on it right now, and this is something that everyone at the state level's taking very seriously. So I think it's fully reasonable to expect that June, July, well within the deadline, that we're gonna have some answers on this. So that's what I, that I take confidence in, is that Governor Whitmer, you know, is taking this seriously and realizes that cities are waiting for answers, and doesn't wanna leave this issue out there. So that's where I, I feel like we're gonna get answers, it's not gonna be something that, you know, we're just gonna be guessing at. So I, I definitely believe there's caution that needs to be taken here, but I don't believe we need to be overly cautious, if that makes any sense. I know, I, I, when I saw that Berkeley had taken this step, I went and I looked at their survey, and their survey's not getting into details about zoning issues or, you know, things that obviously we're gonna have to address in the legality of the form, or like legality of the ordinance. Their survey was really, hey, is this something that you're interested in, is this something we should even look into? If, if, you know, it comes back and the majority of the residents are like, no, this is not something, then obviously that sends a signal one way or the other. So that's kind of the information, I know we talked last month, you know, waiting on the state, but also looking for citizen input. And in my mind, since January to now, we haven't really had either of those, you know, we have, really haven't had citizen input, and we really had any indicators from the state. So I would caution, like Mayor Metzger said, and, you know, Jim, this is what I was thinking about, too, is like, an opt-out ordinance, I mean, there's already municipalities who have opted out, right? So there's, there's already sample ordinances out there that we can draw from if come November, or before November, October, September, August, where we're like, you know what, this isn't gonna work for us this year, let's act out. We could put, you know, an ordinance together, really simple language, it says, this satisfies our requirement to either opt in or opt out. I'm totally comfortable with that. What I'd be less comfortable with is, you know, opting out so early in the process. And that's why I hope, you know, we don't do, especially since we haven't got any input from the state, and we haven't got really any resident input. So I would, I would hope that we could at least get some resident input before we make a decision on this. That's why even if the town hall, you know, Chris Johnson was on this podcast, and he, you know, he, to your point, Commissioner Wall, he didn't have all the answers, obviously, but he had a general outline comparing what other cities and other states have done under this law. He could speak, you know, and I know, you know, Greg has already, you know, put together a good legal overview of what we're dealing with here. I think, you know, our residents would benefit from that. I think we had a great town hall on the, yeah, the traffic calming. That was one of the best public engagement sessions, and I, you know, really credit that to the work that staff did in preparing that for that evening. I thought that was great, and I would love that if we could get somewhere on this issue, you know, before we, we lead to a decision either way. So my, my hope was that we could, we could, you know, adopt option one, that would definitely be my preference.
You know, I was just gonna say that the new room and the new technology just makes it that much better. I mean, it makes, I wanna have town halls there.
I like the floor.
It's a great room, I mean, Jim can really do his thing.
Mayor Metzger, can I comment?
Yes, please.
Will not be writing.
No, I know you're not, I know you're not gonna do this one, I don't.
So, so I think, and I'm not gonna speak for everyone, but I think everybody would be up for having a town hall meeting, like, of course we want resident participation. I think it would just be like, when it would logically make sense to have the town hall meeting, like, have a town hall meeting when we can actually do something, right? And what I'm hearing, and Greg, could you comment? Sure. Again, 'cause I know we talked about this before, but can you talk about what the negatives would be for opting out at this point, or what the positives would be for opting out at this point?
Well, the positives are, you've made a decision, but you can always reconsider.
At any time, right?
At any time, right. And as we mentioned last month, you can make the decision, and through, you know, citizen petition, that can be, that can be reversed, so. But at least you've taken a position, a position that isn't revocable, you can change it, and, and I agree with Jason, that we can put that ordinance together relatively quickly, similar communities have, and the language is pretty similar. The disadvantages, and I think, I'm not speaking for Jason, but, you know, he believes that the more communities that opt out, there may be opportunities for communities that wanna opt in. So, I mean, if you go on record as being against it, well, that, that sends a message. I'm not perhaps as confident as the folks on the podcast that things will be done by June. The governor has a lot on her plate between, you know, fixing the roads and schools and everything else, so, you know, she may have the best of intentions, I'm not sure this is gonna be a major priority to get it done, but I may be wrong, that's certainly speculation. The opting in would take more time, obviously, because there may be a whole regulatory scheme that would need to be developed, and again, other communities are doing that, so it's not something that would be all that complicated or difficult, but it will take time. Did I answer the question?
What happens if we do, what happens if we do nothing?
If you do nothing, then whenever the state regulatory scheme comes into place, whether it's November, earlier or later, then anybody would be able to locate in the city with the state license, you would not have any.
You'd have no choice.
Correct.
Okay.
So we can take no action tonight, though, and choose to opt out later, or one of the other options?
Correct.
Okay.
And in fact, I suspect we could do two things, we could have a town hall and opt out.
Right, sure.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm still interested in getting community input in some fashion, whether it's just an online survey, or a survey in town hall a little bit later, or something to that effect.
Community, we need community input, for sure.
Yeah.
Right. And there are a lot of, yeah, we talked about the gray areas and some of the questions, unresolved questions. One unresolved question that a survey might answer is, you know, when people voted in favor, were they voting for recreational use, or were they also voting for, you know, having those kinds of commercial facilities in their community? I mean, it's a two-pronged approach, nobody knows the answer to that, obviously, as to why people did what they did.
I think you have to look at all aspects of it, and really research, I think it's a big decision.
And, you know, the act expressly. And, you know, the act expressly allowed the opting out. So when people voted for the proposal, they voted for a proposal that allowed their local community to opt out.
Sure.
So it's not like, you know, opting out is somehow going necessarily contrary to the, you know, what citizens of Pleasant Ridge wanted when they voted in favor of the proposal, so.
But I do, but I do think there's information, you know, information, a lot of people, and we talked about it last time, around that there's a windfall tax opportunity. Well, I'm not so sure about that, and certainly we know that business-to-business sales are not taxed. So if we get some of those facilities, we get nothing. So it's just the retail, actual retail facilities, so. And I think that people don't, you know, there's a lot of information that people don't have. I mean, we don't even have it, and we're reading this act and everything else, but the common, you know, the people who voted, 74% of our, our residents voted for recreational marijuana, but what, as you say, what did they have in mind in addition to that? Did that mean that they wanted to go buy it down in Ferndale? Or, you know, or they figured Royal Oak and Ferndale would take care of it, they don't have to worry about it, or, or something to that effect, so. So, no. I think that information needs to be put out there and discussed, so.
Right, because you also, right, because you also very much have to look at the fact of, you know, the litigation possibilities with all this, but also that, you know, this is still not federally accepted, so that, you know, it is a cash business, and that causes a whole different, you know, I mean, we're, we look at our DDA businesses and things like that, and what are the real opportunities in Pleasant Ridge for facilities like this? And there are, you know, you have all kinds of parking and other issues with that, so.
Did you want to?
Could I interject?
Chief, yeah, please, please.
Okay, ma'am.
Please do.
Good evening, back again. I had this prepared from the last couple meetings, but the opportunity never came up. Back when the law was getting voted on, back in November, there was a lot of talk among law enforcement, mostly amongst the Michigan Associated Chiefs of Police, better known as MACP, about the law and what could happen and how it would affect communities. The MACP was against the law and proactively lobbied against people voting for it or whatever. Obviously, successfully, it was voted in. With that, though, and you're able to go onto the Laura website and see which communities are opting in or out. What we're seeing, and the behind-the-channels talk, is many of the communities were waiting to see what other communities, their neighboring communities, were doing. So they were waiting, and there's nothing, like Mr. Neid says, as to waiting or making a decision, too. Now, Ferndale has several places that they've opted in, and there's several places there. If you drive down Eight Mile, they're popping up all over the place there. So they are within close proximity if people want to choose to do that. And if you're opting out, you're only opting out of the business side of it, not the actual possession of it by residents in town. Some of the, the tax implication things, when California, and I can provide you with a bunch of this material that I get on my emails, but like, California was looking at a billion dollars that they thought in tax revenue. They only realized, I think, 230 million, like what Colorado got. And the thing with Colorado, when it first started, is everybody went there as a novelty. So that first year, they realized this large amount, but with that, they realizing that, excuse me, something called, banks don't want to handle the money, and there's problems with that, and then security and things like that. The thing here that I, my concern would be, I mean, we're going to enforce whatever you guys voted, and we'll do that. However, we have limited park, limited business areas and limited parking. So with that limited parking, cars are going to park on your side streets. You know, people with either cash going to the business are parking in front of your homes where your kids play and you walk your dogs, which we discussed earlier, to go to this business and provide themselves as a target with cash to be robbed. If they don't get robbed, maybe they're walking out, now they're walking out with marijuana back to their car, which is parked in front of your home on your side street. So that's a thing that I would consider is, do we want to encourage a criminal element coming into our town? Because we're given an opportunity for people to be robbed on our side streets, because they'll come here. We're a small town. We're not a large police force. Doesn't take, we do a good job with keeping LFA people and stolen cars, but it still happens. But I don't think that we want to invite more crime. If we had ample parking and things like that, then I think it wouldn't be as big of an issue. But from the law enforcement side, I just think it would create some problems in that aspect. Just something to consider. And then any materials that you might like, or you want emails from the Chiefs of Police, you'd be happy to provide with that.
It's an important perspective.
Yeah, I mean, we just discussed walking the dogs, kids playing, your kids playing on a bunch of streets. I mean, I don't want that element in front of my house with that.
Well, we looked at, I mean, remember when there were discussions of different bars opening and things? And I mean, Corp didn't open until, you know, our first liquor license didn't go out until 2009, 2010. And, you know, so it's like, we're not necessarily always going to be at the front of a lot of these different types of establishment-type things. But not saying that people don't support it, I mean, as we know from many, like, our auction items and stuff, our city definitely does not frown on alcohol or bars, but, you know, we have played, you know, we like going other places. I mean, it's such a family community, how much money we've spent on parks, and, you know, and we've chosen over and over to support those sorts of things, like crossing, you know, safer crossing for Woodward, and things like that, and, you know, really focusing on the community aspect of it.
I think it's a context issue, too, because, you know, Royal Oak and Berkeley are talking about this. We're having the equivalent discussion of saying, okay, well, you know, the Vincetta neighborhood in Royal Oak is deciding whether or not they want marijuana businesses to locate in that specific half mile, half-square mile. And St. John's Wood neighborhood in Berkeley, you know, should we allow it in our little slice of frontage on 12 Mile? And, you know, without the context of, those are much larger cities that have much greater diversity in terms of opportunities for locations, appropriate locations. Because, you know, the thing I always come back to on this is, we have very few locations you could put these. I talked with the owners of Iron Ridge about this, and they're sort of ambivalent about whether or not they're, they're not looking, they're not excited about having a marijuana business there. That said, if somebody wanted to rent out the place and the price was right, and they thought it would fit in, I think they'd consider it. But, you know, they're, they're sort of, I guess, agnostic about the whole thing. The issue is, you know, with the liquor license, we have far more, we know we have far more control over that process than we would over a marijuana business. And just, you know, with the small nature of our Woodward parcels, you know, the potential for the negative externalities and the spill-over effects into the neighborhoods is great. And we don't have sites that have a lot of onsite parking or controlled access, or, you know, any of that, where you park in their lot, go in their building, and leave. We, you know, some of our commercial sites have a few parking spaces, but, you know, in a lot of cases, they're going to be parking on streets and walking on sidewalks and, you know, all of that. So those are some of the things I, just, you know, personally, as a planner, as a city manager, talking to Kevin about how we have to police this, those are, those really are truly the concerns I have. And that's where we are a difference in, in not really scale, but in kind, to, you know, Royal Oak, or Ferndale, or Berkeley, when they're considering.
Setting aside the thing that's being sold, and even if it was a Starbucks, we'd be having this conversation.
Correct.
Because of the layout of the roads. I mean, Eight Mile's just an entirely different landscape, because the residential impact on Eight Mile is relatively small. Of course, there are houses near the buildings on Eight Mile, but it's not like any of our streets, as we've seen in prior discussions about restaurants and bistros and other things that could have come along Woodward. So, I, to me, it just needs a lot of thought.
Yeah.
It's not something you just hop into, so it makes sense to me to protect ourselves from the potential that someone might generate a license or request a license that we have to accept, because we didn't opt out and give ourselves the time to create some ordinances that fit the character of our town, and then maybe opt in later, after we've figured it all out. But that also shouldn't stop us from maybe doing a community survey to understand why three-quarters of our population said yes on the last, on the last ballot measure, because there's something there that we should figure it out.
Right, and I think even just the points that Jim just brought up, I think these are things that need to be shared with the community. I mean, they need to hear these kinds of things, because I don't think these, they're not thinking about this. This is not, and I think that this is a big enough issue on many levels, that it needs discussion with the community, that we need to get that kind of input. We need to at least hear them out and have them hear from us.
Yeah, I agree.
One other thing, I think the newness of this has this, like, shiny effect that everybody, you know, oh, it's new, we should do something like that, or whatever, and be, be first, or hop on board and join the bandwagon. But sometimes it's, you know, you can make a stand, if it's, just because everybody else is doing it, doesn't mean you have to do it. If it's not right for us, and it's not right, don't be afraid to go, no, this ain't right for us, so we're opting out. If this was Walmart wanting to come to town, this wouldn't be an issue. But because it's new, well.
It would be a big issue.
No, right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come here, and we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't want, because of the business and the traffic volume that it brings. But because this is new, everybody is kind of enamored by it.
Right.
And so I think to take that into consideration.
Maybe early adopters isn't always what it's cracked to be.
Correct. And my guess is that, and the 74% that voted for recreational marijuana will not then approve marijuana facilities in Pleasant Ridge.
It would be an.
Sure, it'll be a flip.
But how do we know that? People keep saying that, how do we know that? They don't know that unless we ask. So when we first started this discussion until now, we've had no input whatsoever. So here we are, the second meeting, we've discussed this. We haven't really, we haven't discussed pros and cons. We've discussed a lot of cons. I've tried to present some arguments in favor last month. This month, it's been very heavily weighted conversation against. My, my preference was, let's have a meeting. Meetings, whether there's, you know, hypotheticals or not, I think they're still valuable in garnering, it would be a great opportunity to have a town hall. Hey, how do you guys feel about this? Everyone could get up and be like, we hate this idea, don't do it.
But didn't we just say that? I just said that.
But I think we're advocating for that.
We're advocating.
That's why I had two out of three bad.
I think we're advocating for community input before we go any further. That's why I wanted to make sure the opt-out was pretty simple to get there.
And you can opt in, too, whenever you choose. The process clearly states, and I have a memo that I can give copies to you all, there's, the opting out is easy, and the opting in is at any time. You can opt out, or you can opt in, and you can create legislation for that.
So the only concern I get into with a town hall at a point like this is, you know, because it is dealing with a lot of unknowns, and so you start to get into a conversation with, that will generate a lot of fear and a lot of.
What have we been doing tonight, if we're not generating fear of this opportunity to have marijuana establishments in our community? And we're talking about, you know, fear of, you know, people coming into our neighborhood, we're talking about, you know, issues with crime and violence. Those are all considerations, I agree with you. Let's have honest discussions about those. Let's talk about what our police department could do to mitigate those. Let's talk about if we were to adopt something like this, the parking requirements that we would have. Maybe it is something where, you know what, the only place this works is Iron Ridge. And if the, the people at Iron Ridge are not making space for that, then it's a mute question. I just, I would love if we could have this discussion above kind of the fear argument, because I think we're, we should be beyond a situation where we're making these arguments based on, you know, people coming into our neighborhood, or, you know, fear of, you know, whatever potential violence. I mean, let's have a level-headed discussion about this. That's where I want to be at it.
And I presented this just, and I opened with, we'll do what you want, we'll enforce whatever you decide on. But you also, you pay me, you pay me pretty well to keep you safe. It's my job to keep you safe. And I'm presenting you with just facts of what happens and what could happen.
And I think that should be part of a town hall.
And I'd be glad to. And one other thing, every day, more and more cities are voting on it, whether they're opting in or opting out. And like I said, you can go on that Laura website and see. But like I said, from all the chiefs, that's every chief in Michigan, who talk to their counsel, their commissioners, their mayors, their city managers, they have some info from behind the scenes that are saying, a lot of them are waiting to see what the other people are doing, rather than making the decision to see what. We know that our neighbors right here have it, right now, the ability to go there to do it is there.
For the medical.
Just, right, okay?
Thank you for presenting this.
Mayor, if I may suggest, the town hall, to me, sounds like not a bad idea, but it would be good if it isn't so hypothetical. So if we sent out a survey ahead of the town hall, so that we get feedback from the residents on what drove the vote, and then hold the town hall, that might happen when we have more information from the state. And then that gives us some basis to, to hold the town hall around, so that it doesn't feel so hypothetical to everyone.
I think that's the right schedule. I think that's the way to schedule it, yeah. May I just say that I'm, I'm hearing that the first option on the town hall and survey input seems to be what we're, we're looking at out of the three options? Would someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Your Honor, I move the city administration schedule a town hall meeting in order to solicit public comments and input regarding a potential ordinance regulating marijuana establishments within the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Second, and we assume that a survey is a component of this.
Would you be comfortable adding a survey?
No, I would, I would definitely, I, I agree with everybody up here that survey is a crucial part of that. So if I could add that to the motion, Amy, and have, in order to solicit public comments, schedule a town hall meeting and institute a survey in order to solicit public comments and input regarding a potential ordinance regulating marijuana establishments within the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Or could we preface, should we say, survey would preface the town hall meeting?
Yeah, I'm going with that.
Yeah, the town hall meeting would follow, be a follow-up.
Do you want me to rework that, or are you good?
She can do it, right?
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know that they have to, you know, that it has to talk about the timing.
Okay.
So are you thinking a town hall before we know any more information from the state?
I would like to have the survey with a town hall to follow.
So no more information from the state?
Well, I figure, you know, by the time we put out a survey.
Couple months.
And the time we are able to convene a town hall, there should be more information from the state. And I agree with Commissioner Kriziek, that the governor has identified this as something that she wants to speed up. I also recognize Greg's concerns that that may not, you know, we want to do everything, but it seems as though she's kind of identified that and put staff to that, so I'm hoping.
We could inform people of the results of the survey, and wait up at the town hall a little bit, until we get some information.
See where we stand on more information, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Because we still have that time for opting in and out.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I guess my fear is, I don't want us, and maybe we could add to a motion, before the commission adopts an ordinance one way or the other, because that.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess, my concern is, like, having just a vague, like, general, like, town hall, like, come tell us your feelings about this stuff.
We're not going to do it.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go next week to Berkeley and see how they do it. I mean, I'm not saying, like, we have to do it exactly like they do it, and, you know, but I definitely think a survey, a town hall, before we make a decision one way or the other.
That would, I would prefer to leave it out, because I'm kind of ready to ask for an opt-out, until we know what the state does. Because my issue with opting in or out is, it has, at this moment, nothing to do with how I feel or anyone feels, it just feels like a liability to the city to stay opt-in when the state could do something in a matter of weeks or months that might opt to send without our, without our control.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask, oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor. The, so right now, I saw, like, at least one facility opened, like, in Whitelake or in somewhere up there.
It's not recreation.
It's not recreation.
It's medical, it's in Wal.
Oh, it was in Wal, it was medical?
Yeah, no recreational facility.
Yeah, no recreational facility could open until the state adopts these regulations.
That was my question.
There are, yeah. There's still medicinal marijuana facilities.
Okay.
They made it look like, the article made it picture, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Evidently, I didn't read the whole article.
No, you can't.
But that headline!
The headline made it look...
And the state isn't, I mean, the state right now, we're talking, I mean, there is a definite time.
November is, yes.
So, they can't move it up to August, you know, all of a sudden they do?
They could, but, I mean, we would certainly know as they go through the process. They're not gonna, they're not gonna spring this on people in the next minute. We would know with some lead time when.
I guess I should be more clear. I think it will take us more, it will take us time to craft our ordinances the way we want to reflect the city. And so, it makes sense to opt out until we know exactly how we want it to look for us. And then opt in when we have figured out all the details associated with the six business types, associated with this new state law, and then make the ordinance fit, to the degree that we can, that the state allows, fit our, the character of our city. And that's my, that's my concern. So, if we don't opt out, then we leave open the option to, for the state to move forward, even if it's November, move forward before we have figured out everything that we want to figure out.
Greg, if we don't opt out, then essentially, we've opted in.
Correct, yeah.
So, if the state does get their regulations in June, and they start accepting applications in July, and somebody applies to locate a business in Pleasant Ridge in July, we can't stop it at that point.
Then we are purely regulated by the state law.
Right. So, from a risk management standpoint, fully understanding...
That this could flip.
That this could flip. I think that Brett is correct, that the prudent thing to do would be to adopt an ordinance to opt out now. And you can tie bar that in the motion, that we're gonna do the survey, and we're gonna do the town hall, and we're gonna do all these things in totally good faith, because we can adopt the ordinance now, and it doesn't change anything. Later, we adopt, if we went through the town hall and the survey process and decided that we did want to do this and did want to opt in, we'd be crafting those ordinances anyways.
Yes, we opted out.
So, all we've done is, when we adopt the ordinance to opt in later, it includes one extra line that says, "Ordinance 472 is repealed in its entirety and replaced with this."
Right.
Yes.
I would feel more comfortable, like, that we're being responsible, like...
Right. We protected ourselves in the time that we are making our decision of what we actually want to do for real, permanently. So, that would be my suggestion from a risk management standpoint, just because we don't know where the state's timeline is, what could happen.
Right. That's the liability I'm referring to.
Yeah.
Which is a hypothetical and hasn't been delineated by the state, right? The state has set this deadline of November, right? So, we're creating this hypothetical, if the state does this, and this is, then we're liable, or we're going to be, you know, forced to, you know, accept.
To the point that you, you guys have said you've read some things that said they're trying to get ready for June.
Right.
My assumption was that they were trying to, that June was to at least get some regulations out there for further discussion, rather than waiting until November, when nobody knows anything, and then all of a sudden springing regulations, plus giving people a deadline. So, my assumption was, it was, they're gonna get their act together, but that doesn't mean they're gonna rush up register.
And it's not hypothetical. We're opted in. Right now, we're opted in.
Right.
Under unknown terms.
But nobody can establish a business until November, so...
But when that happens, we're in. So...
In November.
Whenever. So, we're in. And to me, the more...
Jason, it's not, it's, the law states, I'm sorry, Brett.
Yeah, please.
I apologize. The law states that under the Act, LARA must begin accepting applications for licenses within 12 months. It's not on December 6, 2019, they will start. It's, they start accepting applications within 12 months. So, as soon as the state is ready with their regulations, they can start accepting applications for licenses.
But we could still opt in out. Well...
Yes, we can.
And if we have not opted out, when the state starts accepting applications, we're exposed, essentially.
I just, I guess I don't understand what the negative is of opting out, if we can flip it anytime we want. What negative is there? Is there a negative, Greg?
Only what Commissioner Crizziak...
I think there's a negative because I don't think it's ever, I don't, I don't think this body is seriously interested in allowing marijuana establishments in the city of Pleasant Ridge.
But we just said that we were. We said that we want to hear what people have to say.
Hmm.
I said it.
And again, I'd say, there are six kinds of businesses.
Okay.
And it could be that some of those businesses, I don't know that we can opt in or out of any of all. We have to take them all. We don't know. Maybe we do. We don't know. But I suspect that there are things that people will want to do and things that people don't want to do.
Okay.
So, to, without any knowledge, without really knowing where the law is going to end up, and whether it fits, fits what people, the people of Pleasant Ridge expect, the safest approach is to opt out until all of those things are really clear, and then we can put some proposals together for people. Speaking for myself, I'm not against any of the six until I know what I'm talking about. I don't even know that from the state's perspective.
Combine the motions to prepare the ordinance to opt out and to do the survey in the town hall.
Right.
And then we'll do it.
And then we'll do it.
We'll do it.
Well, there's a motion on the table, right? And it's been approved.
It's been seconded and hasn't been voted on.
Thank you, Amy. I'm sorry. So, it's been seconded. So, I in no way am interested in amending the motion that I made to opt out, so...
Is your motion include opting out?
No.
Okay.
No.
Or we're opting in?
No.
Does it include not making a decision?
It includes gathering information.
It includes creating a survey and letting a survey for public input, and scheduling a town hall meeting for public input on any potential ordinance regarding regulation of establishments.
Perfect.
Nothing propped in and nothing propped out.
Excellent. Okay.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. What was excellent?
That that's what, that's what the motion is.
We will conduct a survey, and we will hold a town hall.
Okay.
Yes.
But then we're still not opting out?
We have to opt out. We need another motion.
Okay, so we can do a second motion to go with it?
There's a, there's a motion on the table that you're going to have to vote on, because Commissioner Crizziak has already said he's not, will not amend his motion. So, you would have to amend, or you would have to vote on the original motion, whatever happens after that motion is.
Okay.
And then we can ask for another one.
Okay. Then we have to vote on that motion.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Wow, that might be our first three to two.
Your Honor, may I make a motion that we also, we add a second portion to this, where we opt out for, right now, and then we still have our town hall and move forward as we collect more information from the state.
I think, I mean, all you would need to do is...
Read the...
Do the...
Okay, so, Your Honor, I move the...
Because of separate motion.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. The, Your Honor, I move the city of Pleasant Ridge pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, opt out of the Act, and the city administration begin preparation of an ordinance for city commission to consider.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I could, Mayor. I, I guess I'm disappointed with the way this has transpired, because last month, we were talking about, we wanted to have more input, and tonight, we're making a decision when we really don't have to make a decision tonight. I think there, you would have had more people in the, that wanted to speak on this issue, either for or against, if they knew that we were making a decision tonight, one way or the other. That's why I will not be supporting this motion, and I would advise anybody who's out there, particularly if you feel like this is some, if you would be interested in having these establishments in our community in a sensible way, that brought in tax revenue and, you know, wasn't a liability as far as legal or in legality, as far as our liabilities, or, you know, obviously, the safety of our citizens. I believe there's ways we can, you know, do that in our community. I would, I would just advise, if anybody's out there and they're interested in supporting businesses like that in Pleasant Ridge, they really should make their voices heard. Please contact me or the rest of the commission, because we want, we definitely want to hear from you. And, you know, like, like we've said, there was a vote that took place in November. 75% of us agreed that we wanted to make this legal. Now, we're saying, well, we want other communities to deal with it, but we don't want to have it in our community. To me, that's, that's something that, me personally, I'm not really that proud of. And I think we've always talked about how we're smart, we're intelligent, responsible community. Yes, like Chief Noack saying, there's people who come into our community, there's people who, you know it, every day, drive through our community, every day. You know, the establishments, you know, we have liquor establishments. We have, you know, people who traverse through our community. So, I would just please offer, you know, people, if you are interested, this is, this is something we need your input in, one way or the other, and...
And we are going to be soliciting input. So, I mean, we have, that passed, so we are going to be doing it every day. They will have plenty of opportunities, and I want, regardless of what happens with this motion, I want people to know that, you know, this isn't an end-all and be-all, and that we will be soliciting for information, so...
Mayor Metzger?
Yeah.
Mayor Metzger. And I haven't said that I do or don't want it in the community. What I've said is, we need more information. And the safest approach is to opt out until we have that information. We can opt back in anytime, but we need more information.
Wait, and Mayor Metzger, can I make a comment, too? And I apologize. I am all for, I, I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna, this is what I was thinking. I thought we were gonna shoot this down and come up with a combined one, saying survey and town hall and opting out. That's what, just so everyone's clear, that's what I'm for. I'm for getting public opinion when we have more facts. I think it's critical, obviously, to get public opinion, but I don't think that there's anything irresponsible about opting out when we can certainly turn it at any second, once we have more facts and we get public opinion. That's, that's my opinion. I just want to say that. So, I'm, personally, I'm that, I want to hear what people have to say as well, which is why I thought we should have a survey and a town hall.
So, now, we've got a motion and support for this one? Okay. Any further discussion before we take a vote?
Amy, would you mind just, is it, are we, so we're considering the opt-out? That's...
Yes.
Okay.
Because your motion's already passed.
Okay.
With a survey and a town hall.
Yeah.
All right.
Good.
And just, I would just reiterate, if there's people who are interested in seeing this in our community, they have to speak up, because we want to hear from you. Thank you.
We will give you opportunities.
Right. And we do want to hear from you. And I agree with Amanda, that it's like, I was expecting a combined motion, but I think it is, I think this works great.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
No.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
No.
Okay. Next item, city manager's report.
Um, I have nothing for her tonight.
Oh, that's a lot.
You get a gold star.
Yes.
Um, next item, other business.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, we have scholar, it's scholarship season, and it is time for, for high school seniors to get ready. And there are, in the January through March ridger, on pages four and five, there are three different scholarship opportunities. One is with the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club. The, and second one is with the Friends of the Library, and the third one is with the Pleasant Ridge Foundation. And they all offer really wonderful opportunities for scholarships. So, check it out. You can find it online at, you know, cityofpleasantridge.org. You can go to the ridger, or you can pick up a hard copy, or you got one at your house. But make sure to apply for these. You can also, I think, get the applications at, I think, at Ferndale High School. And I'm sure several of the other high schools around the area have the, them as well. Like, I know the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club one is available to any student who lives within our school district. It doesn't, regardless of what school you go to. And then, and I like the one for the library, because they require some volunteer time at the library. So, it's kind of fun. And the Pleasant Ridge, the, the foundation scholarship is a wonderful, generous scholarship, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a really exciting book to discuss for a book club this month. It's called The Underground Railroad: A Movement That Changed America, and the author is Evelyn Milstein, and she's a local librarian. She has two master's degrees, one in library science, one in healthcare. And she is retired now, but she spent 70 years of her life studying history, and in particular, the Civil War. And she culminated that lifelong learning into this really great book on the Underground Railroad. And I think one thing that Evelyn really does that's unique in this book is she highlights that this, the Underground Railroad was one of the, it was the first biracial progressive movement in the United States, where you had upper-class people, lower-class people, African-Americans, former slaves, free slaves, white southerners, white northerners. It was really one of the first movements, if not the first movement, in our history, where everybody came together to solve a social ill. And I love the way that Evelyn highlights that in this book, because I think it speaks, it can speak to so many opportunities in our own time. And I think that's when history is best, when you can look at it and reflect on how it applies to today's problems. So, Evelyn is actually gonna be at the meeting on Wednesday, February 20th, at 7:00 PM at Four Ridge. She'll be joining us, and she's gonna talk about, you know, her lifelong learning and her passion for the subject. And I'm gonna ask specifically if she can, you know, talk about that aspect, because for me, that was very revolutionary thought to think, you know, yeah, that was like, really a great example in history of people from all different classes, all different races, coming together to change something that was obvious, social ill. So, yeah, I'm really excited to have Evelyn join us on Wednesday, February 20th, at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And seriously, if you haven't read the book, if you have read the book, if you're just interested in, you know, that period of our nation's history, please feel free to join us on the 20th.
Sounds good. Any females? No other amendments? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.